The Monday, December fifteenth, twenty fourteen, school board meeting.
Will the board members who are present please respond? Mr. Sturdervan?
Here.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bourne?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Right there.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps? Mrs. Larson?
Yeah.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chair. We need to amend the agenda to remove item two point zero two, Girls and Pearls, to remove item four point zero to receive an update on the communications audit, and to add legal to closed. And to item four point zero six, we need to add also revisions to one dash two point five, compensation and expenses of the policy manual.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda has been amended. The next item on the agenda is item two, your recognitions. And let the record reflect, we've been joined by Mrs. Taylor.
Mr. Chair, we'd like to take this time to have our Director of Head Start Program come forward to introduce our first recognition and tell a little bit of why.
Good evening, Dr. Baden and honorable school board members. My name is Kara Artsono. I'm the Early Head Start Head Start Manager. And it is with great pleasure, I'm here to stand before you and introduce to you one of our Richmond Public Schools Head Start Hero. A couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call from one of the teachers in the Head Start classroom saying one of our students helped to save his grandmother's life. She was at home, and she wasn't feeling well, and she fell. This young man picked up the telephone and dialed nine one one. When the police arrived and asked him how he knew to do that, he said, "My teachers taught me." So it is with great pleasure, we so often hear in the news all the bad things that are happening, and so often little of all the good things that are happening. There are so many great things happening here at Richmond Public Schools, and this is definitely one of them. So it is with great pleasure, I introduce to you young Mr. Rashid Jackson, his teachers, Ms. Simmons and Ms. Fox, and his mother, and his aunt, Aunt Ms. Shayna Wright is his mother, and Sherry Wright is his aunt, if they'd like to come forward.
Mr. Coleman and Ms. Larson, I would like to take this opportunity to present to you, to present to Rashid, this certificate of recognition for your outstanding service and your outstanding decision-making, and for paying attention in school, obviously. And you represent the hope for our future, and we want to tell you that we love you and we appreciate you, and we are so glad that you were there to take care of your grandmother. Thank you so much. And to Ms. Fox and Ms. Simmons, we want to tell you that you represent the good parts of Richmond Public Schools that often go unnoticed, and we thank you for taking the time to share with our children some of the basic necessities of life. You too should share in this celebration for being there for the grandmother, because of you taking time to work with our young people. The grandmother is in a better position because of that. So we want to thank you for representing RPS well. Rashid? Here you go. What do you want to tell us?
Thank you.
Our next recognitions this evening are for the Safe Schools Poster Contest winners.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent, Dr. Baden and guests. I am Carrie Lindenfeld, Safety Trainer for the Department of Safety and Security. I am joined by Chief Timothy Mallory, the Chief of Safety and Security, Mrs. Charlotte Hare, the President of the Richmond REA Association. Safe Schools Month is recognized annually during the month of October. It began with the proclamation from the School Board declaring October twenty fourteen Safe Schools Month. There was a series of activities throughout the month, including the school-wide poster, writing, and PSA contest. The awards tonight are for the winning entries of this contest. The theme for the contest this year was "School Safety: What Can You Do?", with the focus on what students can do to help keep their schools safe. The poster and writing competitions were judged by the Richmond Education Association's representatives and divided into two categories. The poster contest, pre-K through two and three through five. The writing contest, three through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve. The PSA, we didn't have any entries for the PSA contest. We'd like to formally award the winners of the contest and thank them for joining us this evening with their families. Chief Mallory, will you assist, will please announce the winners?
We have, first place, poster category for P K two. Taylor Carter, first place, Miles Jones Elementary School.
I have something else, too. Taylor Carter. This is a ribbon for your honor. And one more thing.
I'm sorry.
While she's looking through that, we're going to call our second place and our third place winner. For second place, Miles Jones Elementary School, second grade, Marshawn Perron, second place. Are we here?
I'll accept that.
Okay. LaCray Freeman, third place, Miles Jones. We also would like to thank Miles Jones Principal, Ms. Sonia Shaw, and Miles Jones Art Teacher, Ms. Lisa Levine. Okay, poster category, three through five. Okay, categories for poster category, three through five. Josie Cox, first place, Miles Jones Elementary School. Second place, is somebody coming up? Stay right here. For second place, we have Kalen Enrich, second grade, Woodville Elementary School. We'd like Woodville's Principal, Joanne Pierre, and Woodville's Art Teacher, Kimberly Jones, come up. Okay, our third place winner is from Miles Jones Elementary School, fifth grader, Talia Moss Melendez. And for our last category, writing category for secondary schools. First place winner, Jamal Campbell, Georgewith High School. Second place. Second place from Georgewith High School, Mia Tyler. And third place, Devon Evans, also from Georgewith. Congratulations.
Two hands. Third hand. No, oh, okay.
You got everything? All right. Step back just a little bit. Right there?
Yes.
Could Mrs. Jones and her face staff come forward, please? Mr. Coleman, as they make their way down to the front, and if you could come down and face the audience. The board wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the work that its office has started, and a lot of them are not here this evening because they start at six AM in the morning, and they've had a long day, but a number of them have come to join us. As you know, we created the Office of Family and Community Engagement, and it has a number of efforts departments underneath it. It has the truancy staff, it has the violence prevention staff, so they do a lot of home visits, do what it do, but they also try to positively engage parents by participating in a lot of the community activities. And so from the administration, we want to tell you that you have gotten off to a bang start, and some of the update reports, the board wanted you to come in person, to publicly commend you for the work that you have started, even without having all of your equipment available to you to start out with. But we hopefully will close the gap and address those as this coming budget year goes forward. For all you members that are not here, please tell them that we thank them, hopefully that we will continue at the same bang-up job you're doing. I know it's been long days, long hours, a lot of weekends. I've seen the line dancing pictures as you're doing, and the cooking, and a lot of schools talk about how they enjoy having you all there and the work you're doing in the community. So that part I can share with you. I don't know if there's any other members that wanted to make a comment regarding them since it was the board's invitation for them to come.
I too, and want to say that I've had the opportunity to interact with you all out in the field, and know that you're doing great work, and know that this is the kind of work that is going to get us where we're trying to go, when we're engaging the young people, when we're engaging their families, when we're engaging the community. That's the stuff that makes a difference, and we just want to see you all continue to go forward, and so that's why we ask you to come down. So hopefully, this will be encouraging to continue to do good work. Thank you so much. Can we give them a hand, please?
Ms. Harris Mohammed.
I wouldn't do you like that. Oh, I'm going, oh. Okay, well, how about you hold us? Yes. Good evening, everyone. The Virginia School Board Association holds their annual meeting every year in the month of November, and I am a delegate for Richmond City Public Schools. This year, Richmond City Public Schools received a distinct honor on behalf of one of their, or Martin Luther King Junior Middle School for their design. V S B A has categories for distinctive designs with school buildings, and Martin Luther King Junior Middle School won the Gold Design Award this year from V S B A, which is truly an honor. You all don't have to clap at one time. There you go. Crowd participation. So I will read what the plaque states. Two thousand and fourteen, V S B A, Exhibit of School Architecture Gold Design Award, Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, Richmond City Public Schools, Designed by B C W H Architects. And if you all don't know, M L K is in my district. Woo hoo!
Don't drop my plaque. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we go to the next item, I also have some awards that are not on your agenda this evening. They are also from the Virginia School Boards Association, and they are Awards of Achievement to Board Members and Administrators for your committed, commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the V S B A School Board Academy, two thousand and twelve through fourteen. And I have certificates for Mrs. Gray, Mrs. Larson, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris Mohammed, Mr. Coleman, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinkney Epps, and Dr. Baden. The next item on the agenda is item three, public information.
All right.
And I have three people who have signed up in advance. What is your pleasure with regard to time, Mr. Chair?
Okay, three minutes for individuals, five minutes if you represent a group.
Ms. Inga Carr?
My name is Inga Carr, and I do have a child in the Richmond Public School system. As the school board moves forward with closing schools and mandating rezoning for fifty-five percent, black students, low readers, are steadily increasing. On a graph crisscrossed with the needs of a city to attract the economics of white corporations, the dance around the educational problem and leadership focuses on themselves. So equating the solution to the reason for the season, to love thy neighbor as thyself, I'm asking the school board to please vote against rezoning and stop school closings. There must be something else that we can do. Using critical thinking in two thousand and fourteen, board members who could not have been board members in the nineteen sixties, why won't you help black students read Fifty Fifty before rezoning again? When data shows by the third grade, black students have been categorized as low readers, and corporations are building jail cells for them. I would like for you to have a particular image in mind using a word problem. Picture a man who's nearly thirty with clothes torn and dirty. Give him a job shining shoes or cleaning toilets with bus station crews. Give him six children with nothing to eat and expose them to life on the ghetto streets. Give him a wife and tie a rag around her head, have her pregnant and lying in bed. Place them all in a Harlem house, I do believe we call them challenged environments. This is a poem written by Mr. Gil Scott-Heron. Then I want you to picture a segment which has two points. At one end, there's a black point, and at the other end, there's a white point. In the middle is, stands an equality. Whatever the answer is for the black point, it should balance equality with the white point. And a second segment, the black point makes reading and critical thinking illegal, and white point indicates freedom, just referred to the Thirteenth Amendment. Then apply the scale of reading black literature with P T A members who say reading books of interest are the best way to encourage learning. Add a third segment, the black point is Maggie L. Walker High School, started as a school for blacks only. The white point, not one student from Maggie L. Walker attends a historical black college, then asks the question, "Why?" It will lead you back to rezoning. And the majority votes from black elected officials in nineteen eighty-nine not exercising equal rights. Please place every proposal that comes before you with its superlatives to this equation, and let's come back in the new year talking different and working together. Thank you.
Please be reminded, there is no applause during public information. Mr. Eric Bronkowski?
Good evening. My name is Eric Bronkowski. I'm a parent of three children in R P S Elementary Schools. I'm a six-year resident and taxpayer in the fifth district in the Benford Middle School Zone. I want to tell you about a vision that I have. I have a vision of a Tuesday morning, September first, twenty fifteen, when hundreds of kids are arriving at Benford Middle School. Hundreds of kids. Some are walking, some are riding bikes, some are being dropped off by their parents, some are getting off buses, and these are black kids and white kids. There are poor kids, and there are rich kids. There are athletic kids, and there are artsy kids. There are advanced kids, there are special needs kids, and there are just regular old kids. They're all coming to a reinvigorated school, energized by a new approach to learning. They're motivated by all the attention that this school has received over the previous year. They're coming to a school that will challenge them all to learn and to grow. They're coming to a school that is broadly supported by the school board and the administration, by their teachers and parents, and by the whole community. A community that is painting walls and planting flowers, tutoring children, resourcing teachers, raising money, leveraging neighborhood assets like V C U and the Visual Arts Center, a community that's making a difference. But that vision rests on courage. First, it rests on the courage of this school board to be decisive, to work hard, and to implement change. Benford needs help, and it needs it now. It's a school with a diminishing enrollment, subpar testing scores, and a reputation, whether justified or not, of ineffectiveness, and it needs a new approach if it's going to retain a significant number of in-zone children. And it needs a new approach if it's going to retain a significant number of in-zone children. In my opinion, a whole school I B program with an accelerated program for advanced learners is the best option. It's just my opinion. Here's why. It offers familiarity. It's a known entity within the district to administrators, to teachers, and to parents. It will be an easier transfer because of that. It offers flexibility because it allows for the incorporation of some of the features, some of the best features of other options under consideration, like the fine arts curriculum. And finally, I think it offers to the school system an opportunity for full vertical integration. In other words, I B is offered at elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level, so there's a continuity of learning. Regardless of the option that the school board chooses for Benford, this vision secondly rests on the courage of the whole community. We, as parents, residents, taxpayers, business owners, must collectively see that a vision of a community-supported neighborhood school depends on us. If we see it, and if we're willing to work for it and sacrifice for it, Benford can once again be the pride of the fan and R P S, the pride of our city. Thank you.
Ms. Mariah White.
Good evening, Dr. Bedden and school board members. My name is Mariah White. I stand before you on the perception of the community. In your decision, I hope you have used every step to come up with a rational decision for Benford School, not individual, but as a team. This is the time for the community to see that you are a team. I have a vision, too, that every child will receive the same opportunity, not because some constituents are where you live, your zip code, or who you are. Or even if you write to the Star Weekly that you need a new I B program. See, community is extremely important aspect of the school board because these are your believers. I would like to address right tonight that each of you campaign for quality and well-being of children and the Richmond Public Schools. And I expect that out of you. In the last two school board meetings, there has been some chaos. First, it was discretionary funds. We stayed 15 minutes on discretionary funds. Then last week, it was culture task force. And not only with that, I was a little appalled by that because I'm in the 2nd District. And I saw that the 2nd District person, there was emergent protective order filed against that person. So then I lost direction on a personal level that how come, if you really care about our children, would you sit up here and go against each other and not be for our children? Why would you go against constituents in the community? I'm not understanding that. I'm not understanding why you're against each other on a discretionary fund when you gave each other...
Miss, no personal attacks, please.
I didn't, that's not personal. I didn't call no names. When there was allotted $15,000 for each of you, $15,000, over $100,000, which can be used to fix our schools. Our schools need fixing. We're talking about one school that we want to follow. Why? Why Benford? No one can tell us why Benford when you have several other schools that need to be zoned. It's not because accreditation, because you already closed a school that was accredited, Clark Springs, not too long ago. We are the parents in this community that needs to know, why are you closing Benford? When you make that decision, make sure you use the decision process, and let the community know what did you actually use to come up with that decision.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the list of speakers who signed up in advance.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board tonight? Please line up. Does that cordless work? Ms. Friend, let me see if the cordless, if the cordless work.
Good evening. I'd like to first to thank Mr. Jeff Boyne for, uh, more bad time for me. I was very sick and very young, and I appreciate you coming out to the hospital to come see me because you didn't have to. You're not even my representative in my district, so I really appreciate that. And that really, when I saw you, that really choked me up. And I still cry every time I think about it because you didn't have to come. And that just says something about you. And you know I've been in the community for a long time to come to see me. I really appreciate that. And second of all, I just, I would just like to say that, uh, boy, and I apologize. My name is Roderick Bullock, and I just can't figure out some things. And I just have asked for phone calls, and I made phone calls, and they told me they were going to be returned. And I called Dr. Bedden's office, and I haven't heard from Dr. Bedden yet. And I would just like my phone call returned. It's a personal matter. It's a school issue. It's not, you know, and I just need, because it's going beyond. I went to protocol, and it's on your desk now, and I did make a phone call. And I talked to Ms. Deloach, and no phone calls returned. Until you, Mr. Coleman, you told me you was going to return my call. Never got anything back from you after I called you. And also, ultimately, Ms. Perkins, she, Dr. Perkins, she didn't return my phone call from instruction. So, I mean, I'm just, I just like my phone calls returned. Even at the last administration, they did return your phone calls in a timely fashion. And I had waited over two weeks for Ms. Perkins' call. I waited over a week for Mr. Coleman and Dr. Bedden's call. I just would like my phone calls returned, and I need to talk to you, and I need some matters clean, taken care of, that's very important. And I would have gotten those matters to, well, one matter with Dr. Bedden, I would have had that taken care of, but I got sick, and I wasn't able to, you know, talk or call you. So ultimately, the issues happened back on October the 9th. And so that's something that I would like for you to call me and talk to me. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Gray, and I am with the John B. Carey P T A. I would like to say thank you for everybody's hard work. I know that these are big decisions to be made, but I want everyone to know the history of what we're coming into and my personal opinion of why Benford has such a low enrollment. It's the non-opinion. Open enrollment has robbed Benford of its students. And whatever reason people use open enrollment for, whether it's their, you know, it's their choice, yes. But from an altruistic point of view, it's terrible for the community. It's wonderful for the individual, and it's terrible for the community. It causes a lot of resentment. It causes a lot of imbalance. We're already from an imbalance state, and City of Richmond is notoriously behind on the times. We, as a nation, we desegregated in 1955. Richmond City did not until 1968. Then the open enrollment law was brought about in 1974 to keep families from leaving the City of Richmond. And yes, it's a choice, but you're also choosing to turn your back on the children that live around you. You lose the connection with your neighbors. And for a city who we have been trying to draw the families back into the city and keep families in the city, I think that the number one thing that we need to attend to is to close open enrollment and fully fund the schools so that we aren't fighting each other for this dollar. There's no reason for us to do that. And there is, especially in this day and age, you know, again, I don't mean to sound contentious, but, you know, you move into the neighborhood, you're buying someone's grandmother's house. Your neighbors can remember, you know, the Civil Rights Movement. And you don't talk to your neighbors, and you send your child to another school, and it causes a lot of resentment. And obviously, it leaves lower enrollment schools in a very vulnerable spot. Because even if they are fully accredited, even if they do keep, you know, play by the rules, we're not playing by the rules. We're not, we're not giving them, you know, we're not giving each and every child in the City of Richmond a fair shake at it. And, you know, I have a lot of parents that we absorb from the Clark Springs. They can't get to their, they can't get to our school. They can't come to P T A meetings. They, you know, their children are busting from here, from there. And I myself, I'm nerve-wracked if I can't get to my child. Like, I want to know the parents in my school. I want to know my neighbors. You know, as it stands, we have four families on my block. Two of them, two of them go to Fox, one goes to Holton. I'm the J B C one. I'm zoned J B C, obviously. I believe in the local. I believe in, you know, taking care of my neighbor's grandchildren. And I need to see this law come off the books, and so many of your constituents need to see this come off the books. And that way, you can start talking about rezoning and have it be fair. The rezoning that you're talking about now, you know, I love, I love the idea of an art-based thing over at Benford, but how many of the children from every single R P S Elementary School are going to be ready for an art-based education, for an I B-based education? How many of them are going to be ready for that? You know, they don't, we, we need to afford them that, and we need to afford them the equality that that affords.
Thirty seconds.
So please consider, I know it's, I know it's a really far-fetched idea, equality, 2014 and all, but again, I share this young man's vision. Hundreds of kids, beautiful principals over there, and the kids that are there right now, they're really great kids, and there's no reason for anybody to keep their kids from going to school with those other children. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the speaker before me for her courage. My name is Art Burton, and I'm going to speak as the co-founder of Parents for Life, which is, which is an organization that was founded in 2000 around the idea of educational equality and around the slogan that we needed to raise the level of care that every child in Richmond Public School System received. And, you know, we formed at a time when the idea suggesting that every child in this city received the same education was a very unpopular idea. And so, you know, we've come a long way as a city. And I'm not going back to 2002, but I am going to go to 2007 to Martin's Grocery Store on Forest Hill Avenue. I'm going to start right there because there was a group of us who met there every Saturday morning, and that was before any of us were honorable or respectful, and we were just friends, who believed or shared this belief that we could have a school, we should create a vision around public education that educated every child regardless of race and socioeconomic background. Because we had accomplished everything in this city but that one thing. And there were several people in that, that met on Saturday, decided that they would run for office. And there were seven people elected who said that they shared that common vision to the extent that we would bring forward an entirely new leadership in Richmond Public School System that would help us to create the vision that every child, regardless of socioeconomic background or color, would receive a quality education. And so to that end, we brought Dr. Dana Bedden here. And he was the first superintendent that was elected by consensus of the community of the City of Richmond around the idea that we should create a vision that everyone in this city could believe in. And here we are at that moment where we can do just that, days away from the opening of Huguenot High School, which was built by the community because, not because we just thought that we just wanted a high school there, but we thought it was the community that would be most able to reflect the idea that we would have a system where all children, all socioeconomic backgrounds, all races, creeds, and culture could be educated together. And we have an academic improvement plan coming forward. We have a facility study plan coming forward. And so when we, so when we talk about courage, all we have to do is have the courage to say that we want the leadership that we selected to do what it was always, what it was brought here to do. So you can look out in your audience tonight and see the division and divisiveness that your processes and policies are creating. You can see it. And so the question is, are we ready as a community to take the next few months to do something that is different? Are we prepared to allow Dr. Bedden to be the transformational leader that he was brought here to be and design a process that every community has to sit down together and come up with something that we all can move forward to together? Are we going to continue to pick and choose who the winners are and ignore the very children that need us the most? Are we, as this leadership, going to live up to the very promise that we made two years ago? Are we going to continue to squabble and fight? That's really the question. Benford doesn't need to be decided on the day. It needs to be decided on, but we also need to decide on the vision for this system that everyone elected you guys to do and brought Dr. Bedden here to facilitate. That is where we are. That would be my hope for this leadership. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Chuck Clink. I'm a parent of an open high school sophomore and strongly opposed to the option of a Benford open 6 through 12 program. The crux of the issue from my perspective is that the city is family middle school students and their parents. Until this issue is addressed, parents will continue to seek out other middle school options. The Benford situation is tragic, though evolving for years, and now the board seems to be reacting versus strategically planning for the future. The scenarios being considered have very little detail and more unanswered questions than answered questions. than answered questions. These seems, this seems antithetical from a planning, resource allocation, and implementation perspective. At the very worst, it appears irresponsible. Open is a school that is succeeding, and that success is based on scale, a close-knit community, developmental considerations related to high school students, a committed faculty fostering independence and autonomy. I'm afraid these aspects of Open would be compromised or demolished by a Midford Open merger. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board that's not in line at this time? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jada Tucker. I'm an eighth grade student at Benford Middle. First, I would like to start off by saying that there is nothing wrong with Benford Middle. We have the best, we have the best principal, Dr. Lyles, and the best assistant principal, Mr. Sales. We have the best administrator team, and there's really just nothing wrong with the school. We have great kids. We have lots of programs that just, that are helping our kids. It's making our SOL scores go up. We may have, may drop a little, but we're still going, doing great. There's nothing wrong with the school at all. So I don't think you guys should shut it down, should turn it into anything, because it's, from my three-year experience, we, it's doing very good. I really like my school, so, no. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kirsten Gray, speaking on behalf of Alliance for Progressive Values. Tonight, board will vote on one of the options for Benford Middle School. My fingers are crossed that you will side with the people. I attended most of the community meetings and all the board meetings on this issue. And the great news I gathered that you have not seen in the news media, how the people, staff, parents, and students, and interested families inside and outside of the schools, and city residents called for not closing Benford for a new school. And showed support of options that are inclusive racially, economically, and academically. Options that would benefit and serve all. Students accelerated to those with special needs, to zone, to open enrollment. On November seventeenth, the administration presented board with options and directed them to poll their constituents and to hold community forums. The public was also asked to fill out an online survey. Over eight hundred surveys were filed. I'm trying to be optimistic, but I'm nervous. If board goes against the will of the people, trust in the process and our elected leaders will be lost. My fingers crossed this does not happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Bedden, school board members. My name is Felicia Harris, and you've heard from me before. I'm here to talk about Benford Middle School. We have wonderful staff at Benford, from our administration down to our custodial staff, our clerical staff. We love and have great concern for our children. The low enrollment at our school has posed this problem, and I have watched this come about for the last seven years. Open enrollment is, or was, put in place to help us because we live, we have a school in a VCU area. I'm nervous. We have a school in the VCU area. Not a lot of children. If every child in the zone attended Benford, we still would need three hundred more children. Because there are not a lot of children in the zone. When I started working at Benford, there were buses and children came from all around. I'm here to say, I don't care if they're black children, white children, red children, yellow children, just send the children, because they will have a great experience at Benford. The T-shirts that we are wearing was designed by one of our sixth graders. And I just wanted to come up here and let you know that all the bad things that are printed in the paper, these are, that's coming from a reporter that probably has never entered the door, has never even seen a classroom in Benford. Throughout this whole process, we've had children upset, we've had parents upset, and staff upset about this whole proceedings. What I'm asking you for is to give us a chance. In, in the community, we have a partnership with Visual Arts, VCU, Richmond Symphony. We already have those things in place. We just need children. We had the children when we had the buses. Bring our buses back and bring the children back. Thank you.
My name is James Sales, Jr., and I am the proud, proud assistant principal of the Benford Alliance. Dr. Bedden, the Honorable Coleman, other members of the board, and the administrative team. It is my esteemed privilege to stand before you this evening and share just a little bit about Benford Middle School. Esteemed privilege. As an employee of the division, I've had the good fortune to work at George of High School. When I was there, I defied anyone to say anything negative about the beloved Bulldogs. Having left George with, I then was employed by RPS at Thomas Jefferson High School. And I defied anyone to say anything about Mr. Jefferson's namesake. And now I stand before you, more proud than ever. This is my twenty-third year as a public school administrator. More proud than ever to stand before you and say, I defy anyone to say anything negative about the beloved pride of the fan. Not the former pride of the fan, but thee, pride of the fan. By a show of hands, in the spirit of being a teacher, Dr. Bedden, Mr. Coleman, your respective teams, please raise your hand if you spent one hour at Benford Middle School observing any classroom. If you spent one hour at Benford Middle School observing any of our classes.
Sales, Mr. Sales?
My apologies, sir. I say that to say that there are great things that go on in our school each hour of every school day. If you're gonna make a vote tonight, I assure you that I hope you've talked to some folks on the front line, that you haven't just read the newspaper articles, you haven't just attended the open forums, but you've done your due diligence individually and collectively as a board before you make such decision. Last time I was before y'all, I shared a few numbers.
Thirty seconds.
Two hundred and sixteen students, seventy-four staff members. The number eight still comes to mind. Eight middle schools, taking enrollment off of the table. Nothing we can do about that. But we sit at number four. Only three schools ahead of us, four schools beneath us. It's not about our school achievement either.
Time.
So what is it about?
Hello, hello. Good evening. My name is Suzanne Whittier, and I would like to, um, voice my, if I were in your shoes, and what I would vote on for what is to become of Benford Middle School. I am, um, an art teacher at Appomattox Regional Governor's School. I'm a parent of a fifth grader who is zoned for Benford Middle School. I live about a half-mile bike ride, walk to Benford Middle. I have worked at the Visual Arts Center. I have taught art after school for Benford Middle Schools. And I have also been a sculpture teacher at Virginia Commonwealth University. I have worked at the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts. What makes me say this is because I'm a bit biased. If I had your, if I were in your shoes and I had to vote, I would probably vote for the arts integrated curriculum. But I also have been an IB examiner for art schools all over the state of Virginia. And, um, when I did that, I realized, um, that IB was also, it was about cultural diversity, which seems to be the big elephant in the room. And then the other thing it was about, it was about arts integration. And I have to agree with Eric Bonkovsky about the idea of, it innately serves itself because we're starting to build this IB school system with what's happening in Churchill and the IB middle school across town. And so that would make sense. It would also make sense since Benford's already got this beautiful arts-integrated curriculum happening without even being asked to. They just did it on their own because they see the benefits of what's around them in our city, that that would also be a supportive background for education for those children. I agree with Eric in the fact that I would also see children walking and riding their bikes and being bustin', flown in for all we care. But, um, it just makes sense that both of those are very good options, and they support each other, no matter if you vote for IB or if you, you know, that arts would be its backup. But personally, those two are your best options, as from what I have known from teaching for the last fifteen years in this, um, community. Thanks so much.
Good evening. My name is Eric Spivak. I'm a parent of a second and a fifth grader. A fifth grader who's now looking at Benford in terms of our home zone. What I wanted to share is that I respect that you are looking at this process from a fiduciary responsibility standpoint. Given the low enrollment we have in middle school, the first thought to potentially close the school seems like a responsible starting point. I respect that the dialogue has progressed from there to then look at how RPS can potentially attract new students into the system. And I also value that you all have solicited community feedback throughout this process. To some degree, I think the community has failed you all from the standpoint of only telling you what we don't want and not telling you what we do want. The most vocal kind of voices have expressed the lack of desire with regard to what they do not want. I think the open plan, the open high school plan, is effectively a decision to close Benford. And that would be the default choice, and I think that's why Open is on there. The other options are about attracting new students into the system. And what I would share is that the time it takes to implement some of these programs, such as the IB program, I fear that the city won't have the patience to endure the low enrollment that the school may experience during that process. So I think the programs such as the arts program, which can be implemented faster, may be the most effective way to keep the school open, to have it looking as much as it does today while attracting new parents into the system. I'd also say that I'd encourage you all to not write off the current administration at Benford. Having had firsthand experience with them, I respect the efforts that they are currently embarking on, and I hope that you all would give that a second chance and also solicit the input of the community with regard to maintaining that administration, provided that you all see that it's effective relative to the choice that you choose. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Bedden, superintendent, Mr. Coleman, school board chairman, and Ms. Lawson, vice chairman, and all of the school board. My name is Philip Ricks. I work at Benford Middle School. I've been employed at twelve years, where I have perfect attendance the whole twelve years. And the reason I have perfect attendance is because I care about the kids. And I'm just gonna say that I'm also a full-time custodian and boys' basketball coach and assistant girls' basketball coach. And as a coach, a couple of years ago, we was playing MLK, was down by seventeen points with three minutes and forty-two seconds left. And we came back and we won. So I do believe in miracles. Just wanna let you know that I do believe in miracles. So I'm just saying that to say that I know you have to pick an option eventually. I don't know if you'll pick tonight or whenever you pick it. I just hope, the option that you pick is the best option for the kids at zone at Benford, Falcone and staff, and our administration. I know you have a hard job before you. Like I said once before, I wouldn't want your job because I know it's tough. And I just wanna say, once you make a decision, I just hope you make the decisions that's best for Benford and the school system itself. And I know you all will make the best decision that's possible. And I also wanna say, in closing, that you all have a great holiday, okay? And a happy new year. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, before we move to the next item, let the record reflect that we've been joined by Mrs. Pinkney Epps and Dr. Jones. The next item is item four, informational reports and items for action. Four point zero one is to approve the minutes, um, that are listed on the agenda, September second, September eighth, September fifteenth, October six, October sixteenth, October twentieth, October twenty-seventh, and the November third, two thousand and fourteen, meetings. Those minutes were distributed to you in advance, and they've also been posted on board docs for your review, so I just ask that you approve them at this time.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppo- any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Eight ayes, one abstention. I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Seven ayes and one abstention. The next item is four point zero three, received for action, a funding education resolution. That resolution was also posted for your review and is in your packet.
Mr. Board?
So I just move that we approve the resolution. We sign on to it.
Has everyone seen the resolution? Madam Clerk?
The resolution reads, "Whereas the General Assembly shall provide for a system of free public elementary and secondary schools for all children of school age throughout the Commonwealth, and shall seek to ensure that an educational program of high quality is established and continually maintained." Virginia Constitution, Article Eight, Section One. And whereas, "The General Assembly shall determine the manner in which funds are to be provided for the cost of maintaining an educational program meeting the prescribed standards of quality, and shall provide for the appoint- apportionment of the cost of such program between the Commonwealth and the local units of government comprising such school divisions." Virginia Constitution, Article Eight, Section Two. And whereas, "The General Assembly shall provide for the support of public education as set forth in Article Eight, Section One of the Constitution of Virginia, which states that the General Assembly and the Board of Education find that the quality of education is dependent upon the provision of, one, the appropriate working environment, benefits, and salaries necessary to ensure the availability of high-quality instructional personnel; two, the appropriate learning environment designed to promote student achievement; three, quality instruction that enables each student to become a productive and educated, educated citizen of Virginia and the United States of America; and four, the adequate commitment of other resources in keeping with this goal the standards of quality, twenty-two point one dash two-five-three point one-three-one, standard one. And whereas, "Increased funding for public education is needed to ensure that the state meets its responsibility to provide public education as a core function of state government and to promote economic development in Virginia." Vast blueprint for public education. And whereas, "Virginia public schools in challenging environments are almost entirely located in high-poverty areas with unemployment that far exceeds the state average and low-per-capita family incomes." The SBA Task Force on Schools in Challenging Environments. And whereas, "Virginia's state aid to public education has been declining since two thousand, since the two thousand and nine recession, with state direct aid K through twelve appro- K through twelve appropriations currently at six-point-eight billion. All funds, five-point-two billion, general funds compared to seven-point-one billion, all funds, of five-point-six billion, general funds in fiscal year two thousand and nine." general funds in fiscal year 2009. Whereas, state K-12 funding reductions have reduced K-12 funding from 35% of the general fund in fiscal 2009 to below 30% in fiscal 2014 and beyond. And whereas, Virginia continues to provide for special interest tax preferences and loopholes while reducing its financial obligation to public education. And whereas, the state's reduction in funding for K-12 has occurred through policy changes since fiscal year 2009, such as reduced state funds for school support, personnel, and administrative and employee benefits. And whereas, the voters of Virginia in 1987 approved the establishment of a state-operated lottery for the purpose of providing funding for public education and further approved a constitutional amendment in 2000, which required lottery proceeds to be distributed to localities to spend for public education purposes. Instead of additional resources for public education, 100% of lottery proceeds now supplant general fund revenues to support public education. And whereas, localities have paid for the increased cost of education required by state mandates to improve public school performance, with localities currently paying 56% of the state versus local share of public education, rather than the 45% they should be paying as defined by the standards of quality. And whereas, localities budgeted $3.55 billion in fiscal year 2013 above their state-required local effort to maintain the actual cost of public education. Annual Superintendent's Report to the Department of Education. And whereas, real estate values in Virginia, and therefore, local government revenues, continue to be depressed in Virginia, increasing only 2% in fiscal year 2013, with little prospect for even average growth rates in future years without significant local tax rate increases. And whereas, the number of at-risk students in Virginia schools has significantly increased to the point where more than 1/3 of K-12 students are now free lunch eligible and 7% reduced-price lunch eligible, thereby increasing the need for more personnel and material resources to help them. And whereas, we believe our state's future prosperity relies on a high-quality education system that prepares students for college and careers, and that without it, Virginia's economic competitiveness and ability to attract new business will falter, and therefore, be it resolved that the Richmond Public School Board and its division superintendent, in conjunction with the Virginia School Boards Association and the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, call upon the Virginia General Assembly to immediately increase the state's share of funding for public education to the level of quality that is prescribed by them and the standards of quality and expected by all of the Commonwealth's citizens." The motion was made by Mr. Bourne, then seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed. Mr. Sturdervan?
No.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Seven ayes, one nay, and one abstention. The next item is 4.04, received for action, Qualified Zone Academy Bond Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Bennen, this is an application for Qualified Zone Academy Bond, a loan of $7 million and $80,000. Excuse me, it's 2012 and 2013 issuances. There'll be another round next year for 2014. Not sure yet how much that will be, but there were three divisions. These are in parts and funds remaining that other divisions didn't use, and they allocated them to us. The higher your poverty level, the more, the higher you are on the eligibility charge to receive these funds. So there were three different localities in this round that the state issued in order to lower the bond costs. And so, the city opted to work with us together in, because this counts against the city's debt funding limit. So they're choosing, and this is one of the things that was in the mayor's task force on financing our maintenance needs. It was one of the methods of the six or so that were outlined in that document, to issue tax-exempt bonds, and it lowers the overall cost of borrowing for the city. These are issued at 0% on an IRS section that allows that. And instead of the city issuing bonds, local government bonds for 2.5% to 3.5% range currently. So, Item 6 here is the crux of it. So this, the state bond council with McGuire Woods drew this resolution up and has reviewed it. It also requires a 10% match. We're using our CIS contributions, requires a private match, which would be $700,000 in this case, and we exceeded that with the amount of contributions that come in through our CIS program. So, so this will, we have to spend at least 10% of the funds within the first six months, and all of it within three years. We're not going to have a problem doing that for these projects. So, worked with Mr. Krantz and identified its projects are already on the list that you approved in our current CIP. So all we're doing is using this funding source instead of the city's local bonds to fund those same projects at a lower cost. Item 6 sums it up in saying that, asking you to authorize the superintendent and any officers to authorize and direct them to take any further actions as you deem necessary or appropriate regarding the issuance of these VPSA QZABs and the city bonds. These actions may encompass the preparation, execution, and delivery of instruments, agreements, and documents related to the issuance and sale of the VPSA QZABs and the city bond, including any application or other documents or materials required by VPSA, the Secretary, or the Virginia Department of Education. All actions previously taken by such officers in connection with this issuance and sale of the VPSA QZABs and the city bond are hereby ratified and confirmed by your action in adopting this resolution. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Yes, ma'am.
So what happens to the money that they've already allocated to us if we're going to get the $7 million through the bonds?
It just remains that this becomes the source of that $7 million the city appropriated already to us, rather than that $7 million of local bonds. So we're lowering the overall borrowing cost for the city in general.
Okay. So do we get the difference if we're saving that money?
Well, I mean, that's not an explicit assumption, but it, it's lowering the cost for this borrowing. So, in the end, it goes into the package of funding that $35 million of needs we have as was recommended in the council's resolution last week. No, we don't have any more money appropriated to us. It takes council action explicitly to appropriate funds, and until that happens, we don't have any other funds to expend.
When will we know about what, how much money will be available next year for the bonds?
I'd say after we submit our CIP by January 31 to council for this next round, and then they take action in the spring along with the adoption of the general fund budget and the capital improvements budget, then we'll know what the appropriation is.
Okay. Thanks.
Just as a point of clarity, you stand as switching over from us receiving it from the city side versus now receiving it from this particular bond. As far as the pay, payment, paying back the bond, does that now make us responsible as a school board versus the city being responsible? Does any of that?
No, it's the same funding source. It's the, going to make the payments on these bonds of debt service as it would have, whether they were local bonds or these QZAB bonds.
We would still be responsible?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Through the appropriation of funds that the city's making to pay these bonds, they're, in effect, that, that's included in the, the debt service that the city is appropriating. And these are going to be paid back over 10 years rather than 20 years, this $7 million. So it'll be paid off at about $700,000 per year on this round.
All right. Is there a motion?
Mr. Jim, you have a question? Okay. I move that the superintendent and any officers he may designate or authorize and direct it to take such further actions as they deem necessary or appropriate regarding the issuance of the VPSA QZAB and the city bond.
Mr. Sturdervan?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is 4.05, received for action, the Benford Middle School Options.
Mr. Chair, at your request, I'll give just an overview again. One is to clear that no option presented recommends the closing of the school at its current location. All options presented would require there to be a functioning school at that location. So unfortunately, there's been some confusion or misrepresentation about the fact that whether the school would be closing, no option presents that as an option. Obviously, the board can choose to do what they want to do, but none of the options as exist recommends closing of the school. The four options were presented were the IB program, which currently exists at Thomas Jefferson, Brown Middle School, and just been approved at Shamarazo Elementary School. The other option was college boards, spring board program, which is a college and career readiness program that is developed on four real core tenants, which is increased rigor of English, language, arts, and math. So it only focuses on English, language, arts, and math. Is intended to expand access and opportunity, preparing students also for future AP courses. Its core instructional framework was designed to be aligned standards, curriculum, and instruction, and assessment, and professional development for teachers, and then provide for collaborative interactions between teachers and students. The third option was an arts integration option that would be developed in-house, based on a conceptual model presented by our new director, Coordinator of Fine Arts. And then, the fourth option really takes advantage of the USDOE and VDOE school turnaround slash transformation model, which would have been the relocation of the open high school model, which would create effectively a 6th through 12th school. All four programs were identified as requested to provide some recommendations as a starting point tied to either local interests, because, two of them came up because of either past and or current local interests. Two of the programs are nationally recognized, programs that implemented throughout the United States. No program should be viewed as a silver bullet and should have a strong professional development component for any of them to be successful. As I said, two are aligned with existing well-regarded national models, but they also exist currently. We have a number of AP classes within our district, and of course, we have the IB program. And additionally, the question has come up about what about other schools? Mentioned by one of the speakers, we have coming to the board on, it's January 5th, I believe is that meeting, is a district-wide academic improvement plan, which has actually five components to it. Theme one being the student learning, focusing on expectations and goals. Theme two focuses on staff selection, leadership, and capacity building. Theme three is instructional tools and programs and strategies. Theme, theme four is how we go about monitoring and using data and to do analysis. And then, theme five is a recognition, intervention, and adjustment of our programs. Additionally, the board was given a presentation about some pending changes to also some other schools that we'll be bringing forward. So there is not just a focus on just this one school. And we did make a change to two other schools already previously, changing the model at Brown Middle School as well as Thomas Jefferson High School.
Thank you, Dr. Bennen. At this time, colleagues, again, we have developed our own rules around how long we get to talk, and so we can start with that, each of us as individuals. Remember, you have three minutes.
I would like to put forward a motion, given the fact that we haven't had a lot of opportunity to reach out to our entire community, also given the fact that the current administration at Benford Middle School hasn't had an opportunity to really present the information that they've presented over the last week. Also, given the fact that Henderson Middle School is our lowest-performing middle school, I would really like to see if we do have any funds available in this budget, if we can extend it to that middle school in particular. I would like to move that we use the fifth option that wasn't on the list and keep Benford as is and allow them the opportunity and resources to increase their population and academic performance. So I move that we stay put and hold Benford as it currently is.
It's been moved. Second? So, Madam Clerk, could you read back what has transpired?
Mrs. Taylor made a motion, and Ms. Taylor, I may need you to help clarify this a little bit, to keep Benford as is and allow them resources to increase enrollment. And what was the last thing you said? I'm sorry. Thank you. And enhance their academic performance. And it was seconded by Mrs. Pinkney Epps. Mr. Sturdervan?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Bourne?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Dr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman? Motion failed. Six nays, three ayes.
Mr. Bourne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we direct our administration to move forward with the integrated arts curriculum, but also combine that with the spring board component and bring, bring us back a plan to do that by the second meeting in January. That plan would necessarily include transportation options, admissions plans, or how, how we might fill the school up. In addition, a plan and the impact of grandfathering in and not affecting any current student that, that goes there right now, today.
Second.
I'm sure the clerk is trying to write that down. I'm sure the clerk is trying to write that down.
The motion was made by Mr. Bourne, and I think I heard Mr. Sturdeman seconded first. And Mr. Bourne, again, I may need some help and clarity, but your motion is to implement the arts curriculum and combine it with the college spring board program and direct the administration to come back with a plan by the second meeting in January to include transportation, admissions plans, and a plan to impact of grandfathering any student currently enrolled.
Well, a plan that includes any current student going there, whether they're in zone or out of zone, not losing their seat at Benford.
Okay, so the motion is to implement the arts curriculum and combine it with the college spring board program and direct the administration to come back with a plan by the second meeting in January to include transportation, admissions, and a plan that includes any student going there in zone or out of zone, not losing their seat at Benford.
Okay, in discussion. Okay, Ms. Mohammed?
I'm confused. If we are making a motion that is directing the administration to include the arts and integration program tied into with the spring board, thus creating a plan for transportation and students not losing their seat, then why can't we direct the administration to create a transportation plan for the school right now? I don't get it. That was not the discussion that I had with Ms. Larson earlier today. I made it very clear that I would support the arts integration program. I was not clear on the spring college board, but no one said to me that we were going to tie transportation and students not losing their seat. Once again, I go through metamorphosis, because all of the information, that was not shared with me, Mr. Chairman. The question that was asked of me, do you support the arts integration? I said yes. I explained why I did not support the college board. Now, and I'm feeling like I'm hooked with it. Let me finish, Mr. Coleman, please let me finish, because I need to be, someone needs to explain to me why we can't create a transportation plan for these children today. That's what I need to be explained. Now, I feel like I walked in here being played one more time.
Ms. Mohammed? There you go. Okay, thank you very much.
What concerns me is communication is not being drafted to every board member. That's my concern. And at some point, we're going to have to stop doing that. The conversation should have been clear that Madam Vice Chairman had, only thing she had to say was, and to include this. It just appears to me that purposely you all don't say certain things to me because I'm going to, I'm just going to put nails in it. Why can't we provide transportation for the children now? That's all I'm asking. We're going to vote the way we vote, that's okay, but all I'm saying is, why can't we provide transportation for the children now? That was not a discussion that I had on the phone earlier this afternoon. So once again, when people show you who they are, you better believe it.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. All right, Ms. Taylor?
I just want to put on the record that this is a fifth district school that we're talking about, and no one has extended a conversation to me about it. Not one individual has extended a conversation about what is going to happen in a district that I represent, and I just want to say that this is a practice and is something that I am very uncomfortable with, and I think that we need to have a serious conversation about showing courtesy and common respect for colleagues. And also, can we even afford what we're talking about right now, given that the budget is already sealed until June 30th, and we're talking about putting people in professional development? Can we make that a part of the report to see if this is even feasible? Thank you.
Dr. Jones? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Epps?
Two questions, and I can only remember one of them right now. Do the principals, what's the impact to the principals? Do they stay with any of these options? Principals and teachers, do they stay with any of these options?
Yeah, I think that's part of what they bring back.
Oh, the attorney is saying that's a closed question, discussion. I just, we had never gone over any of that, and in looking at how some of the changes could come about, and I'm using Reed as my point of reference, and I know this is different, but those four options, at least one of them was that you remove the principals and you could remove half of the staff.
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Bedden.
One is, we actually have gone over, you all were not at the meeting when we discussed staffing, but we can share with you and close.
Well, it makes it hard for me to vote if I don't have that information.
Okay. Mr. Bourne?
Thank you. And perhaps my choice of words was not as artful as I needed it to be, because I think my intent with transportation was, you know, what does it cost? You know, what are the impacts if you, I mean, we've had a lot of talk about transportation to and from Benford, whether you leave it alone or whether you do something different. And I think that's an important piece of our decision-making process once the finalized plan would come back. Moreover, I think, you know, to, and I just saw the email come across from Mr. Westbay that the pro-pupil cost right now as we stand at Benford is over $18,000 per student. And so when you, if you were to put transportation on top of that, I think that's a very real cost. I mean, it just exacerbates kind of one of the issues that's been identified, which is we, you know, the balance is out of whack with the number of students, the number of staff. I mean, it's almost a three-to-one staff to pupil ratio. And so perhaps, I mean, I don't know if this sort of allays Ms. Harris Mohammed's concerns, is that you bring us options, not a plan, but what does it cost? All that should be included but not limited to, so it's not just transportation or admissions, but it is, you know, what are the staffing implications? Do we need leadership changes? Do we need, you know, what does this whole thing look like? I mean, that's what I believe my intent was, is to say, bring us a comprehensive plan by the second meeting in January. And then that's when I think we can make another set of informed decisions about, okay, here's the cost, this is too exorbitant, we might need to dial it back, or we might need to scale it down a little bit and implement a little bit slower. I mean, that's how we make decisions. We get the information at each time, at each point, and we base those on the facts, the numbers, the data. And so that was my intent. If I need, if the motion needs to be withdrawn and more artfully stated, I'm happy to acquiesce to that, but I, and I didn't mean to suggest that there was any information or, and I wasn't privy to what conversation Ms. Harris Mohammed and Ms. Larson did or didn't have, so just wanted to add that perspective.
Mr. Sturdeman?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I want to thank Dr. Bedden and his administrative team, Mr. Jeffers, for listening to one of the things that we asked you to do when we hired you, which was to deal with one of the biggest crises that we have facing our city, which is the state of our middle schools. And in this case, you all got out in front of a situation where we might be losing accreditation in a school, and attempt to deal with that on the front end rather than on the back end when the State Board of Education comes in and tells us what we have to do. So I appreciate the proactive work to try to fix this problem before it gets worse. I like this plan because my hope is it's going to raise academic performance, it allows the families that are at Benford to stay at Benford. We heard a lot of good things that were said about Benford as it is now at our last meeting and tonight. And no, just as you said, there is no perfect solution. We've got to find the right compromise that we can come to as a group that's going to move our school system forward. But, you know, it's like you said, Dr. Bedden, this is not a focus just on Benford, because your team has an academic improvement plan that's coming out in January that's going to attempt to transform our entire school system, and we need it. So I think this conversation unfortunately has been focused solely on Benford, but, and Benford families are right to say, we're not the only one with challenges in our school, and there are other schools with bigger challenges, because there are, but the superintendent and his administration, this school board are focused on fixing these things beyond just one school, and this is just, it's a start. And it's going to take time, and there are going to be challenges, but we really don't have any option other than to act, make the best decision we can with the information that we have, and really begin to move forward and fix our school system holistically. So thank you, Dr. Bedden.
Ms. Larson?
I just wanted to clarify that walking into this meeting and what I believe I'm voting on tonight is a concept, and like Mr. Bourne was saying, the next step is for Dr. Bedden and his team to bring us forward more details. You know, we want more details, too. We heard from the public, you know, you all want more details. They put these four concepts out to us, and I believe their intent, although it can be frustrating at times, was to purposely leave it kind of loose on the details so that we can have some control over what admissions looks like. We can get this, a couple of options from them and say, okay, we want to, like Mr. Bourne said, look at grandfathering in the students that are there. We want that to be an option that's on the table, as well as how we can populate the school. When you look at system-wide, our middle schools, from a time a student enters kindergarten, we lose 30% of our student enrollment by sixth grade. So we have a serious issue, and I'm concerned, you know, on a personal level, I'm concerned as your representative, and I think that leaving the school as is is just not the way to go today. And I also believe this conversation is greater than just Benford. I think the meeting we have on January 5th is going to be very enlightening, and we have many other middle schools we need to look at, and we need to make some changes there. So we're not only attracting other children to those schools and filling them up, but that we're also educating all of our students across the city as best we can, and that they're leaving our schools either career or college-ready, and that foundation they get is in middle school. So I see this as an opportunity. I would also ask the administration to have something in their plan that speaks to the marketing and outreach, because I believe this is a huge part of this, reaching into our elementary schools, working with the school guidance counselors, and having middle school nights where families and students can come and find out about new options in our city.
Ms. Mohammed, followed by Ms. Epps.
Ms. Friend, how much time do I have?
33 seconds.
Then I would like for the motion to be revised, to take out transportation and just to state for the administration to submit to us a plan by the second meeting in January. And the reason why I'm saying that is because we can sit here and say that, and I receive what Mr. Bourne is saying professionally, but we can sit here and say one thing, that, oh, we, you know, it's going to be our thing, we want to come up with these solutions and these recommendations and such and so and forth and back and all of those things, but in the back of our minds, we are really talking about what was, we're really going to be talking about what was just stated. So if we really want integrity and transparency in this process, then we need to take out, we need to revise that motion and take out transportation and students being grandfathered in. If we know that's what we want to do, then we can bring that forward in the second Monday in January. Let the motion just state what it states without that information. That's my suggestion.
Okay, I'm going to, Ms. Lilly, to help clarify where we are.
Mr. Chair, there is a motion on the floor. I believe Ms. Harris Mohammed is, are you making a motion to amend the, excuse me, motion on the floor to delete the reference to transportation, the current students, the information about the students that are already there, still remaining, and I believe that was the only?
My recommendation, my amendment to the motion is just for the administration to bring to us a plan.
So it would delete the? We're deleting that.
That's it, right.
And so that motion, in order for the amendment to go through, there needs to be a second to that amendment, and then you need to vote on, if there is a second, you need to vote on whether to amend the motion, and we'll go from there.
I didn't hear.
Mr. Chair, is there any, there has to be any discussion on the amendment?
On the amendment, this? Excuse me, Ms. Mohammed, what'd you?
Okay, the amendment made by Mrs. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Ms. Taylor is to implement the arts and integration program, combine it with the college spring board program, and direct the administration to come back with a plan by the second meeting in January.
Okay, discussion, Ms. Epps?
Yes, we just chose a lead turnaround firm for this school. Do they have any subject matter experts with regard to whatever option we choose this evening that they would be able to still work with that particular school through any of these options?
Dr. Bedden?
The lead turnaround partner does not control your curriculum. They have to come in and work within the curriculum and support us in implementing our curriculum. So it doesn't matter which one is there. For instance, spring board is written off of Common Core, and there's a lot of similarities with regards to the SOLs and Common Core. You may have to change the sequence and make some tweaks to it, but this is focused on math. The professional development is very much key to it, so our teacher will be there, so we will work with them to support the implementation of the program. But the lead turnaround partners are to support what the district wants, is its curriculum focus, and in this case, it's the standards of learning that we have to focus on implementing, so they're not, it wouldn't be the same thing they'll be doing, if that makes sense to you. Is there a fair statement, Ms. Perkins? And Janice?
Ms. Taylor, discussion on this amendment?
Yes, just that I find it very concerning that we wouldn't take the opportunity to grab hold of the two lowest hanging fruits, and that would be Henderson Middle School and MLK Middle School. and MLK Middle School. We say we want to be transparent. Again, the first denial of that is the board not reaching out to me to have discussion in regard to a fifth district school, but there's no conversation about how Benford's budget has been slashed. There's no conversation about how the transportation that's being offered for this program, it wasn't offered to the students who are currently there. There's no conversation about how tutors that are being funded through grants are going away, and people who need to know about it aren't being informed in a timely fashion. Those funds aren't being replaced in that facility. And then consistently, the message from the administration and this board is that this is a failing school, that these are failing, hopeless children, and they're not. Nothing could be further from the truth. So again, I ask this board to consider getting all of the facts, focusing on the schools who need our attention the most. Henderson Middle School at the very bottom of the eight. MLK just a step above them. And leave Benford alone. They're fine. They're a great school. Leave Benford alone.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Ben.
I'm not sure about the idea of Benford's budget being slashed. In fact, we've held Benford harmless with its staffing and the costs. There actually is, Mr. Born shared an email to all of you all from Mr. Westgate, we're actually spending more on them. And in fact, I'm not sure you're saying after school? Okay. And again, a missed meeting, there was significant conversation about some interventions and efforts coming towards Martin Luther King. So that's already been put out to the board. There's been things being worked on for Henderson, so it's not true. There are things in the pipeline.
Ms. Taylor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be supporting the original motion tonight, and I support the language that Mr. Born articulated, because I think that it promotes clarity on the end of the motion that we're making. We want to dispel the misnomer that whatever we decide to do, kids will lose their seats and won't be able to go to that school. We want to be able to have a robust conversation relative to transportation and how we're going to make whatever program we vote on tonight accessible for not just some, but for all. One of the things that we can't do is nothing. We're in a middle school crisis, and I too am grateful to the administration for coming forth and bringing creative ideas and giving us the opportunity to chew on these ideas, because they all have their own merit. I'm supportive of the Arts Integration piece, because I think that it would work well. I think that we have other middle schools, I know that we have other middle schools that need to have this same conversation, and I'm looking forward to having this conversation about Bouchal, and MLK, and Henderson, and others, and Thompson, because it's going to have to happen. This is Benford's time. I would rather be proactive and creative on our own than have VDOE come in and tell us how to react to what they are going to require us to do. And so after much thought and after much conversation, I'm going to be supporting the original motion tonight.
Okay, any more discussion? Mr. Born?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like, I mean, I agree with what Dr. Jones has said, and just, you know, to the extent that we beat the drum and, again, and repeat ourselves, our middle schools are our toughest challenge, and it is not lost on me, and it didn't take me until this meeting to hear or to learn that Henderson is our worst, our lowest-performing middle school. And I'm, I'll say here tonight, I'll say every night until we get a plan just like this for Henderson. Dr. Ben, I would hope and implore and beg of you, please make Henderson the next pilot project, because I am tired of two years in a row of having 7% pass rates for some of the SOL tests. That is a crime that we are perpetrating against young people. And I'm, I look forward to the innovation and the creativity that your team can bring to bear to change the outcomes, change the course for these students. And so, you know, status quo is not an option for me now. It won't be when we talk about Henderson, it won't be when we talk about MLK, it won't be when we talk about Reed, or Albert Hill, or Thompson, or Bouchal, or any of the middle schools that we have in this city. Status quo's not been an option since we got on the board. So let's not any of us lose sight of how and why we got elected by the people that elected us. They wanted a change because things are broken. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Again, tonight, I really always appreciate when people come out to voice their opinions, and even when they're heated, even when they're strong. But I also tonight want to thank my colleague, Ms. Taylor. If I can bring to her recollection, I had a meeting with you at Benford with the principal and the assistant principal for over an hour, sir, and it was an informative meeting. I appreciated the meeting. I appreciated hearing that perspective. The challenging, these type of moments, and I think a few of our speakers tonight tried to address us as a board, from the perspective of, this is challenging, this is hard, but what is more needed is for us to do our job in such a way that demonstrates that we can disagree, but when we finally do vote, that we vote, and then we stand for the purpose of seeing that school succeed. And that's what I heard definitely with Dr. Jones, and thank you so much, sir. At the end of the day, I don't think, there's nobody that came here tonight and said, man, I want to see Benford fail. Woo, woo! Nobody came here like that. And for some time for us as adults, we need to accept the fact that we're just not gonna agree. But at the end of the day, I had the opportunity to ride on the grand marshal float with a graduate of Richmond Public Schools, who's my brother, who's now doing some things nationally, and he's a product of Richmond Public Schools. If you read the Free Press, you'll see him talk about a teacher from Richmond Public Schools that impacted his life to do what he is doing. And so when I sit in my seat, and tonight as I sit in my seat, I believe that despite whatever else, at the end of the day, that the majority of people in this city want to see young people. Did you give me time? All right, now I see what it feels like. That's good. To see our young people succeed. So at this point, I'm gonna move back to the chair seat, and we're gonna move this along. Thank you.
I would just like to take a moment to say that Mr. Coleman's brother is very famous. He's on The Walking Dead, and he was on The Wire, Chad Coleman, they look alike.
Dr. Ben.
I would like that, no matter what happens here tonight, one is Mrs. Epps, I actually can answer one of your questions, because we did answer it, that in your part about the teachers, it follows a normal process that's outlined in our policies with the teachers, and I can spell that out in more detail later. But when I just thought about what the motion was, and I know personally, as a superintendent, if you go at Spring Board, we would go, I would recommend the digital version, this actually increases the allocation of resources to that school. And somehow, I think that's been lost in the conversation. We would actually be adding additional resources to the school with the cost of a nationally-recognized program. The arts integration and the plan, when I think of what you laid out, and the cost factor. So it seems to be that we're talking about something that no one's really said, we're actually giving more to the kids and to that school. And that's what I'm struggling with right now as an educator. Both models actually add more resources to the school, and that seems to have not come out in any of the conversations. So this is actually an investment back into the school with the idea of adding and increasing students at the school at the same time.
Okay, any more discussion on the amendment? Madam Clerk, could we have a vote on the amendment?
Okay, so the vote is whether to amend the original motion, and the amendment was made by Mrs. Harris Muhammad, seconded by Ms. Taylor, and the amendment reads to implement the Arts Integration Program, combine it with the College Spring Board Program, and direct the administration to come back with a plan by the second meeting in January. Mr. Sturtevant?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
The amendment fails. Eight nays, one aye. The original motion by Mr. Born, seconded by Mr. Sturtevant, is to implement the Arts and Integration Program and combine it with the College Spring Board Program and direct the administration to come back with a plan by the second meeting in January to include transportation and admissions, that includes any student going there in zone or out of zone, not losing their seat at Benford. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Muhammad?
No.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes, six ayes, three nays. The next item on the agenda is 4.06, to receive a draft policy of 1.58 and 1-2.5. 1.58, I'm sorry, being school board travel, and 1-2.5 is the compensation expenses policy of the policy manual.
We'll take a two.
Board members, if we could take our seats. Let me hear it, Brian. All right. All right. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda again is 4.06, to receive a draft policy, 1.58, the school board travel, and 1-2.5, compensation and expenses policy of the policy manual.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The policy revisions before you tonight are, were initiated a couple of meetings ago in conversations regarding board travel. And this is what you see here. 1-2.5 is based off of a change that's made in 1-5.8. And you should have your summary that's in front of the actual text of the policies, which have the bullets of the summary of the revisions. And so starting with the travel policy, which is 1-5.8, and I'll go back to the other policy. Basically, that is the policy that sets forth what the board is, how the board is going to guide the travel with respect to in-state, out-of-state conferences and board-related travel. Just going down the summary of revisions, this is based on the state travel regulations for lodging, meals, and incidental expenses. The policy proposes the set travel request, excuse me, requesting travel approval and reimbursement. It defines local and in-state travel and limits approval for in-state lodging to no more than two nights. The proposed language limits board members to two out-of-state trips per fiscal year and limits attendance at any out-of-state conference to one board member. The proposed policy includes language regarding trip cancellation. And going back to that, to the compensation and expenses policy, 1-2.5, you'll see that a reference to the travel policy is now incorporated where you have the language regarding your professional development activities. And based on the conversation in the last, not the last meeting, but when this was discussed last, the language regarding reimbursement for personal transportation, for travel to and from school board meetings is deleted. And in the new policy, it's specifically prohibited in your in-state, excuse me, in your local travel. Since the policy revisions were posted, I've received two updates from Mr. Sturdevent just to put out there for board members' consideration. This is your first reading, and so I'd ask that any other revisions be given to me by the end of the year, December 31st, so that we can have time to incorporate it into the policy for your second reading during your first meeting in January. The revisions that Mr. Sturdevent has brought forward to date would be to reduce the two states, excuse me, the two trips out-of-state to one per fiscal year. And you, when you note in your policy, there is a meals and incidental expenses section on page, actually page four of your policy package, that basically states that the per diem that the board members will receive is based on the state travel and that as it's written, the board member will get that pre-rated amount without itemization of expense or receipts. But Mr. Sturdevent has noted a revision that receipts must be provided for even the per diem. So those are two revisions that I have at this point. Other revisions, once you have an opportunity to review it, please give them to me by December 31st, and then we'll work out if there are any policy one or two that we need to kind of options that we need to bring forward for final approval. And I'd like to add, if anybody wants to know how this, how it works or has questions about how it works, please give me a call. The state pretty much sets forward the guidelines in general based on where your destination is. And so if you're going to San Francisco, your lodging rate will be a certain amount, your meals and incidental per diem will be a certain amount, as opposed to just simply traveling to Charlotte, North Carolina. Though it will be based off of where you're going in-state and out-of-state.
Ms. Epps?
This policy, is it going to be applicable to the staff as well, or is this just for the board?
This policy is just for the board.
Okay.
Okay. Again, everyone be reminded, Ms. Lillie has asked that we get to her our revisions by December 31st. Thank you very much.
I would like to say for the record, the, now, the administration will have to weigh in. They already have a process in place for the administration. And so we'd have to see.
I still want to add because the last discussion, when this last came up, I remember it being stated that they wanted this in all areas to be possible. So I want to make that a record that that's the revision that I would like to make, which could, for the school boards and the state and the school's administration to take heed to as well. If it doesn't make sense for our administration to be gallivanting, if that's what they do, the board is going to.
I will make that note, but just for, you know, I'll make that note. And for the record, the administration, they do have a set process already in place.
I just want to say, I just want to be a safe and consistent.
I hear you.
If I was to come change, if I was to change, I want theirs to limit that as well.
Okay.
Ms. Lillie, can you send a copy of the administration's or the current process?
I'd ask the administration, Mr. Westbay, if you can take care of that, honor that request, please. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is 4.07, receive the financial statement for the period ended November 30th,
Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Bedden, this report for the month of November shows that we're on track, as we have been. It shows that revenues of $70.8 million collected so far to date versus $84.8 million spent. The reason there's a gap between those two is because the city has a cash reconciliation process. They cover all of our checks and then transfer money as needed to keep a zero balance for, to keep cash invested in the interim for the difference. So those transfers show up later, and will ultimately balance by the end of the year. We're still working on our year-end projection. We'll have that for you in January with some recommendations on moving monies to cover accounts where we know we're going to need them in the court. Like, for instance, we know we're going to need, right now it's still looking like about $600,000 in our workers' comp area, based on current experience. So that and turnover, moving funds from turnover accounts and vacancies that we've had during the year has generated savings that we can reallocate to cover these other accounts. So we'll have that in January, and that's the extent of my comments unless there are questions.
Mr. Sturdevent?
Mr. Westbay, on page three of the report, it's the last page of the PDF, there's a $2.4 million negative.
Shortfall?
Yeah.
That's an expense refund account that covers transportation reimbursements. It's really a revenue account, it's why it's a negative on the expense side. It's kind of confusing. And next year, I want to make a recommendation, we move that to show that has a revenue recovery for the transportation services. So the transportation budgets, the budgets for the transportation are actually in the school accounts, so they end up reimbursing to reduce the expenses of transportation for field trips and extracurricular. And also the warehouse, that's two items. It's transportation and warehouse. So the warehouse buys the goods, expenses it in their account, issues it out to the schools, and then reverses it out, charges it back to the school. We expense it in the school and zero back out the account in the warehouse. So the warehouse should be a zero-sum game when it's all said and done. If that makes sense. So that's why that $2.4 million negative. So if we collect all those funds, if we issue all those goods out of the warehouse and we, and they do take all the transportation trips they planned to take in the budget, then that number would be a zero at the end of the year. So those expenses will be moving up into the other accounts within the schools.
So it's not an aberration. It's supposed to be there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
The previous page, last four lines from the bottom, there's the $204,000 in the negative for notes payable.
Right. That's a number, we might have to make a journal entry to adjust that. I've got to look into that because that is the note payable on the performance agreement that we already have in place on our energy program. And that note, remember, is supposed to be about $550,000 a year. So either something has been coded there that needs to be reclassed to a dividend or I'll have to look that up, and I'll send a note out about that, about what that correction is.
Thank you.
Or adjustment. Last year, we had budgeted $350,000, and we bumped it up 200 this year because the note on that is $550,000.
Thank you, Mr. Westbay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is your closed session, and I believe you were going to go back upstairs. You're going to recess and read in upstairs.
Yep. We will recess and reconvene at 8:36 in the school board room.